This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everyone. How's everyone this morning? Good. Good to see all of you. We have a special treat today. We have Bill Powell. He's our Finance Committee Chair, and he is going to do what we call Finance 101. He's going to explain to you where all your monies go. So, Bill, if you can come on up. Let's give Bill a hand.
Good morning. A few months before I retired, I got an assignment to go to Korea and make a sales presentation to Kia because our corporation and the division I worked for had been trying to get some parts business from Kia. It's up and growing and was great business. And there was a small window opportunity opened up in the brake division, and that's what I was with, that we could do a brake presentation. So, I prepared a technical talk. I was doing technical sales. I did a technical talk. The corporation completely went through it. I was schooled on what I could say and what I couldn't say and what Korean norms I had to follow. And we went there, and we got put off for an entire day in a hotel because they didn't want to see us the day we were scheduled. Anyway, so we went into the conference room. And as we entered the conference room, a delegation came in. And as in Oriental societies, you could tell who the head honcho was. And everybody followed. The right people sat next to them. I said, "Whoa, who is this?" This was not expected. Turned out, it was the chief design engineer for all of Kia. And he had sat down. So, after brief conversation introduction, I said, "Well, open up your presentation because I'll start." And he says, "Excuse me, Mr. Powell. I do not like the title of your presentation." Talk about a gut punch. Now, I mean, we got a vice president from the corporation with me. So, I said, "Okay, well, fine. Turn to page one, and we'll talk about why we're here." And he says, "Mr. Powell, I do not like why you're here." So, I took the presentation, and I went like this, and I dropped on the floor. The vice president of the corporation that was with me was having a small coronary at that point. And I said, "What would you like to talk about?" And he says, "I have a few questions." For the next two and a half hours, he asked questions. I went to a whiteboard, and I wrote lists. I did formulas. I drew graphs. And every time I filled the whiteboard up, one of his people would jump up, scan it, and clean the whiteboard, and I would start over again for two and a half hours. Finally, he says, "We are done." Now, I'm figuring I totally blew it because I've given away every trade secret our company had on how to make rotors at this point in time. And as he stood up to walk out, he says, "You, come with me." So, arm in arm, we went down the hallway. And he said, "We have lunch, and then we will come back and have the presentation. And I will have the proper people here, and we will do your presentation. And it will not be in the conference room. It's being moved to the corporate auditorium." So, anyways, again, my vice president, he says, "I've never met that guy." He says, "I understand five minutes is a long conversation with him, and you've just had four and a half hours." So, anyways, I tell you that story for one reason. My days of ad-libbing and off the whiteboard are gone. We will stick to the script today and such, and script alone. So, with that, Dave is turning things on and off. I got the clicker to advance it, so we'll have a little communication with Dave once in a while. Happy Trails has four funds, budgets, whatever you choose, pools of money, whatever you choose to call them. There are the operating budget. That's often known to all of us as "the budget." The reserve fund, which we're all somewhat aware of. The asset improvement fund. And one that is not described in the CCNRs in any place is the activities budget, something we've added recently over the last few years, and we'll talk about each one. The CCNRs do a great job of describing each fund in great detail. Exactly where the money comes from, exactly where the money can go and such. And whatever detail is there is the detail we have to use in those funds. Each fund is unique in where the money comes from. It's unique where the money can go to. So, they are... Now, there is a little overlap now and then based on what the project and what the item might be, but essentially, very separate thoughts on all of that. Let's talk about the operating budget. Like I said, it's typically known as "the budget." They're working on "the budget." They just passed "the budget." I'm going to tell you at the end, every fund has a budget. And if someone says, "Hey, what about the budget?" My first question will be, "Which budget?" So, anyways, they're all different and such. All right, Dave, what do I aim at? There we go. The operating budget that we have, which is the one your monthly assessment is based off of, is listed... It is a series of common expenses, and it is designed to pay those common expenses. As CCNR 111 says, "Common expenses means the actual estimated costs incurred by the association owning, administrating, maintaining, operating the property, including but not strictly limited to the following." Okay. So, it is basically, again, your household checkbook. You remember those? That was before PayPal and other things. That was when you used to write checks. It's basically the operating of the day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month bills that get paid. So, Dave, would you bring up the next slide? Because I'm not getting it here. Or did I? Oh, wrong one. All right, let's go the other direction. Oh, boy. Well, it's not a... Didn't read very well. So, and I'm not going to read each one for you. It is in the CCNRs. Look at 1.11, Common Explanations. And each one is listed here as they go through. And basically, it's all the costs to operate the various departments at Happy Trails. The patrol, the housekeeping, landscaping, communications, maintenance, administration. It covers insurance, legal accounting, HOA fees, trash collection, utilities. Basically, everything that occurs on a week-to-week, month-to-month basis. There is one exception to that in that entire list, and it's a little hard to read on the... No, actually, I went two of them. Duck on it. You know, you plan this stuff perfectly in it. There we go. Nope, that's going... Goes forward no matter what I do. All right, there's that. Let's go on back. There we are. Item number G. You notice G. And I'm going to have to get mine out here because I can't read it properly either. Side ones are easier? Okay, yeah, you're right about that. So, G says, "Reasonable reserves, repairs, and replacement of property." That's how we're going to fund the reserve account. We're going to talk about that later on. But this is the one exception to what I would call day-to-day, month-to-month, week-to-week expenses is the CCNRs tell us that we fund that out of it. Now, on your bill, each monthly bill you see, you will notice that is broken out separately. That was done years ago for clarification purposes. It is part of the operating budget. We just have broken it out over the years to make sure you can see it separately. It's a separate number. But it is actually housed within that number. So, each year, the Finance Committee estimates all of the operating costs with the assistance and input from the management, and we do it. And all owners are assessed equally for their share of the common expenses. Let me go to one other one before I leave here. Okay. Look at the very bottom one. And that's an important one to look at. The attorneys have... After the... Has a long list of expenses that you can read. They throw in the catch-all phrase at the bottom. "If we missed anything that should have been there, we want you to include it." So, any other reasonable common expense should be included in the budget, excepting, and that's the important part, reconstruction costs and capital improvements. To my... As to my knowledge, reconstruction costs has never occurred at Happy Trails. It incurs when a building is physically damaged by wind, rain, forces, sewer backups, whatever, and it requires some reconstruction. That's another whole 'nother page in the CCNRs and such. But it also says, "No capital improvements." So, therefore, the operating budget is not the depository for projects that we're going to put forth and say we need to do. Any other... Any capital improvement we're going to add does not fit in this. This is the operating budget that fits elsewhere. So, before we... Before we come up with the assessment of what... For homeowner... This list is even worse, but I did that on purpose. Actually, I told her to put... There's two and a half slides here. We're going to put them all... I said, "Put them all in one" because I wanted to see how long the list is. Basically, before we do the homeowner assessment, the committee looks at every possible source of income that we have. And if you look at this list and that list... Jumped to for some reason. There's the others... There's the second one. It's about 15, 18 items long. I didn't count them. So, we look for every single possible source of income prior to doing the assessment that the residents will pay. And the balance is what we charge, what goes in your monthly assessment. Once the budget is estimated, it goes on to the board for approval. And then, basically, it's handed over to the association to spend it. Once it's approved, it basically is management's responsibility to execute the entire budget. There's nothing on the budget that really requires any additional work on it. It's an approved amount of money, and it's approved and a list of things, and each one is budgeted, and they're allowed to spend against it. Yes, there will be some where they overspend, and there will be some where they underspend. Because if you noticed in the first thing, it was an estimated cost for each item. And estimates are always have some opportunity for error in them. Okay. So, we'll go on to the reserve fund. There's more to talk about that budget, but I'm going to talk about it in a minute. All right. The reserve fund says it's included in the common expenses. It's a part of the regular assessments. This is words I have pulled out of the CCNR. I didn't want to put the whole paragraph in. They're to be held separate. They're not to be commingled with other funds. The responsibility of the board to provide, in good faith, reasonable amounts. And it had other words. I picked up what it really meant to say, and that was repairs, maintenance, and replacement of the common property. That is the sum total of what the CCNRs tell us about the reserve fund. That's it. It does not tell us how big it should be. It should not tell us... It tells us how it should be funded through the assessment, but nothing on what should be in it, how big it should be, or anything like that. That has been left up to the association. Happy Trails has long contracted with a company called... A third party called Association Reserves. We often refer to it by its initials, AR. So, if you hear me saying "AR" in a few minutes, it's Association Reserves. They manage the files of all the accounts... Of all the items we have and provide us with an annual report of needs. Association Reserves is a national company. It has 80,000 customers. It serves HOAs as small as four-Unit, fourplexes, you know, little four-unit HOAs, to mega resorts. They do the whole gamut nationally. They are big. They, in turn, belong to an association of reserve associations. There are many companies that provide the reserve service. They belong part of that. And that group provides national standards for reserves. It gives us ideas on what items should be involved, how to handle things. They provide national guidelines on how we can use the reserve fund and how the reserve funds operate. AR has regular webinars. At least once a month, there's somewhat of a major one. And then, weekly, they have smaller webinar-type things. Several of us sit in on ones that appeal to us. I probably sit in three, four, or five a year. It's part of our fee. It costs us about $6,500 a year to have the contract with these people. They do one... Once... One year, the community do an onsite and bring three or four people in here. They go through the... Look at a lot of things, our buildings, look at a lot of items with us. And then, for the next two years, it's a paperwork thing. They... AR does not manage our funds in any way. They do not make it... Give us any advice on our funds, on how to manage our funds. They are strictly a... Put together a computerized report that has and manages our particular file. To date, we have approximately 420 items on the file. And it spans 30 years of life. We can look out... I can tell you right now, in 25 years from now, what is our expected income and what is our expected full value and what and such. So, we can look at that. Looking at the four items, at what items should be on the reserve, there is a four-point test. And we actually, in Happy Trails, have added a fifth, not a test as much as a little bit of a guideline. The question... The things that get put on the reserve, we ask ourselves, anytime there's an item bought or major repair, replacement, is it a common area item? Does it... Is it common? I mean, it's not related to anybody's particular lot. It's common. You know, that goes without saying. Does it exceed the minimum value that we reserve against? Currently, that minimum value is $5,000. In the past, it was $1,000. It had way too many maintenance items on it. We moved it up to $5,000 a few years ago and provided some additional monies in the budget for maintenance items. But it was just hugely tilted to maintenance items. So, now, does the item exceed $5,000? Does it have a defined lifespan? In order to be a reserve item, you have to be able to look at it and say it has a lifespan that we know it'll be. And typically, that lifespan is less than 40 or 50 years. It's not a hard and fast, but 30 is even more common. And can its condition be monitored? Let me give you a real quick homely example. The floor you're on. This flooring, and any flooring throughout the resort, is on reserve because it exceeds $5,000 in value. It's common property. It has an expected lifetime of somewhere in the 40, 50-year range. And we can monitor its condition. We all can look down and say, "The boards look good. There's a bad board over there," and whatever. We can monitor its condition. What is not on the reserve is the concrete below this floor. Yes, it's common. Yes, it exceeds a value. No, it has infinite life because it'll be here until this building is demolished because there's no wear, no tear on it and such. And we can't monitor it. Another one we look at is plumbing. We've all seen pipe breaks throughout the resort. Piping is not on it because it has a long life. But mostly, it can't be monitored for its breaking, so therefore, it didn't meet the description, and so it was never placed on it. And the fifth condition that we're leaning towards and trying to use, and it's not a hard and fast rule, is we're looking at it being a replacement item, not a repair item. We replaced the roof, and that'll come on. If there's some repairs to a section of roof, we're going to try and cover them elsewhere. So, we're basically trying to do is look at replacement items down the future, not just filling it up with a lot of repairs. We receive a report every year from them, which runs 370 pages long. There's an executive summary. It tells us where we're...